Okay, um, thank you all for coming this evening. Um, this is our s- uh, s- board, school board study session. Um, we are audio, um, streaming this, this evening. Um, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Stallow for our purpose and agenda.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Our purpose in study sessions is always so that board members and administrators and staff have a chance to come together, to share information back and forth, to build trust, and to ensure that we have efficient and effective decision-making at the board table. Um, this evening, we're going to be reviewing, um, multiple things. Uh, we're going to talk first about some of the facility use fees and get an update on that. We'll talk just a little bit about the naming of La Olah Delago, uh, as it moves to Grainwood and what that looks like. We're going to have a very brief update on our standard reunification work. And we'll spend the most of, the majority of our, our evening, um, talking about, uh, an update on where we are with the budget process. Um, additionally, if we, uh, depending on how our, how our time goes, we'll look at policies with that. Um, I did want to, before we started the formal agenda, I did just want to give, uh, all of you, board members, as well as our, uh, listening, uh, public, just an update on, um, on the COVID-19 and the preparations that we have been making, uh, since then. Um, pretty much on around-the-clock planning and preparation, especially based on the changes that we're hearing on, at this point, an hourly basis. Um, we've sent numerous communications to staff and to families, and our goal and commitment will be to continue to share information as we're able to get it. Uh, yesterday, we did receive the executive order from Governor Walz that schools will be closed no later than Wednesday. Uh, we had almost the entire administrative team together during that press conference on Sunday, uh, at 10 o'clock in the morning, and then the team spent the entire day planning and trying to, um, understand what some of those expectations were, um, for our families and our, our students as we plan for, uh, potential prolonged closure of our students. Um, we know that although the governor did make the, uh, declaration that schools needed to be closed by Wednesday, um, as a team, we collaboratively made the decision, um, that we would close four students beginning today. Uh, our staff members reported to work today to begin working on the long-term implementation and planning for distance learning. Um, heard from several leaders throughout the day, and again, we convened as a leadership team this, uh, this afternoon. Um, also got a chance to talk to Union President Sean Bodett throughout the day, and every account I got, um, I heard nothing but compliments about the amazing work that our staff members were doing, um, rolling up their sleeves, leaning into the unknown, and really thinking, um, intentionally about how can we design a very different way of delivering quality instruction and services to our families should the closure need to continue, um, into the upcoming weeks. Um, our certified staff, uh, and, uh, paraprofessionals worked on distance learning plans. Our child nutrition services, uh, staff has been collaborating really deeply with Rock, um, to determine how best to serve some of the, the meal needs of our students. Community ed, um, is working on the plan around providing childcare for our emergency responders, our medical workers, and we made the decision today that we'll, we also opened that up to staff. We have many staff members that we need here with us as we plan, um, for this distance learning plan, so we opened that up. Our custodians met this morning, um, and have been working around the clock as well and have continued to have a plan in place for deep cleaning. Um, our DSC staff has been keeping the district running, and, um, board members in our public, I just need you to know how proud I am of our staff, um, how they really are looking at this with a solution-seeking focus, focus as they design, uh, something that none of us really know what it's going to look like right now. I also want to thank board members, um, for the support that you've shown. Um, two of our board members, Lee and Stacy, got a chance to be here today and greet some of our, our staff that were working and thank them. I've tried also to remind staff of, uh, the trust that you have in us, um, and the confidence that you have in us that we will find a plan that works well for our entire community. Um, we'll continue working diligently on behalf of our students, our staff, our families, and our community. Um, we'll maintain our focus on providing quality instruction and support services to our students, um, as we look, uh, at the ever-changing guidance that we're given, both from a federal level and a state level. So, I just wanted to update you on that and, um, let you know that we will continue to communicate as quickly as we know things have changed. I know we just got additional information, um, from our governor today about some decisions made at the state level, and, uh, we'll continue to plan forward and make decisions that we need to make in response to some of the guidance that we're given. So, thank you.
Thank you for the update. Um, moving on to, um, the district governance and policy, um, we follow a board agenda, and we have a working document, and tonight we'll be focusing on, um, mostly the budget is, is, um, what our goal would be, um, for discussion tonight at the board meeting. Um, having said that, we'll move on to facility use fees for 2020.
Um, obviously, you have a lot of information that I provided in the board packet. Uh, one of it is fee study, and there is also some information, um, regarding kind of what our revenue projec- projections are for next year. But basically, I kind of want to focus mainly on what we are looking at for, uh, to present for fee increases for facility use for next year. Um, obviously, we're getting some new additional spaces that are going to be added at the high school. Uh, one of the big changes was, uh, we were typically a per gym fee, and now for secondary schools, there will be a per-court fee. So, that is one of the changes. Elementary school gyms will remain a per-gym fee because, those are rarely divided. It's typically one user that uses that space. Um, Five Hocks and Glendale are, are smaller gyms in the district, and they will have a, their fee remained the same. Um, just to give you a quick overview, we have not done a fee increase since 2017. Um, our priority groups, um, priority one is our, all of our, um, district activities. Priority two is our youth associations, nonprofit that uses school. Priority three is nonprofit community adult-based, uh, activities, and priority four would be our out-of-district or for-profit. So, that gives you an idea of, um, what is being increased. We are, a couple other things that we will be separating is the multipurpose rooms. Secondary multipurpose will be under one category, and then the, um, elementary will be under another. Based on the fee study, um, our costs for priority three and priority four were already a little on the higher, so we had some wiggle room on priority two. So, those are the ones we're looking at increasing. Obviously, our consumable costs have gone up. Our, we're adding more spaces, so we're looking to recoup some of the costs from that. Um, a couple other big changes that will be occurring, um, the camps and clinics that our staff and coaches provide in the summertime, um, had not been charged, we're charging them a, uh, $10 per participant fee if they're charging their participants to be in a camp or clinic. Um, we did it per participant because if you have a group that's, say, like gymnastics, that's only got 10 kids, but you have football that has 200 kids, to charge them the same rental fee, seems, this evens it out more. This way, we'll capture, um, anything from those that use outside to inside. That's one change. The other change is typically, LABC, our booster clubs have not paid for consumables, our rental fees. Next year, we're looking to have that, they'll pay a rental p- fee, so they would be charged just like you're seeing your PLAYS and your, your soccer clubs and different people that come in and have fundraising tournaments. They will also be charged for that fundraising. They can still come in, have meetings, will not get charged for that, but in the future, if they're doing something to raise, you know, where they're bringing in 500 people on a weekend and are fundraising, they will now be considered a priority two. That is the main stuff that I'm looking at. There are some changes, um, obviously with the upgrade to the Twin Oaks Auditorium. We did increase the fees for that as well. There's been some verbiage that's been changed in the guidelines that supports that change. There's some old, whether it's, uh, the amount of, of, uh, seats that are in that space, you know, there's some changes in that as well. But that is, that's the main things we're looking to have you guys review and approve for that. If you have any questions offhand of the material you've looked through?
Any questions? Go ahead, Stacy.
Um, so, for the majority of this, I mean, the majority of our use falls in priority one and priority two. Do we get much as, I mean, I would assume like-
There's not, the biggest, um, our biggest user is priority two.
Okay.
It's our, it's our community that uses it. Our biggest spaces are the cafeterias, the gyms, and the auditoriums, and the pools.
Okay. Um, but we don't usually get to priority three too often in any of those spots.
Not priority three, priority four, we get, priority four is probably, it goes one, two, and four, and then three. Priority four is our dance recitals, so we do have some of that that comes in, um, in there, you know, that type.
Okay. Um, as far as, and I just asked you some questions just as far, um, earlier, just around the per, where is it? Okay, the camps and clinics, um, and district staff. So, rosters are going to be submitted, and so that's just to ensure that it's being used by the district?
The rosters is how we're going to-
Oh, charge people.
Yep, it'll be based on, that's how we'll charge the fee, too.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha.
And also, if a, if a coach is hosting something and they have, um, say they want to use the gym and they're inviting, uh, people from other districts, it's not just serving our youth, then that's going to be put in priority three. They need to be, if they're holding a camp and it's going to be for their athletes, they're, they're charging a fee, we'll gra- we'll gather their roster, and then it's going to be a $10 per participant. If they're doing a, like I said, a wide-open camp that's serving the metro area, it's going to be a different priority. It'll go into priority three.
And we'll determine that based on the rosters?
Yes.
That they submit? Okay.
I mean, I, I actually, um, have worked on a separate, uh, kind of form that they'll fill out when they submit their request. That's just going to ask them the standard questions and that we need to submit a roster.
Oh, so even while they're making their requests, they'll know about the change in this?
Yeah, they've already, we've kind of already given, uh, coaches and staff a heads-up. Uh, you know, I've been working with Russ a little bit on this as well. So, we've kind of already communicated that this is a change we're looking at, so they are kind of aware that, uh, this is being presented. And, uh, so then, when they submit stuff, some of the first questions that are going to come up are going to answer some of these questions for us to follow which priority they're going to fall in. But they're going to be, um, like I said, anything that is for outside, if they're doing outside of the community, they're going to follow regular facility use, the insurance, everything will be kind of falling the same than what they've done before.
Okay.
Regular procedures.
As far as other districts, um, doing this, I mean, I, I have seen this since I'm in the industry. Um, I have seen the $10 report at use. Is it, I mean, is it, you know, other metro-wide places doing this?
Yeah, and we actually, Lakeville is kind of, they do that too for their coaches and stuff. Um, LA, the booster club is kind of 50/50.
Okay.
So, there's a variety of whether they charge or not, um, but a lot of the camp, some of the camp stuff, um, they'll actually put them right under the facility use policy, and some of them will do the per-participant. It, that one varies a little bit more.
Okay. Um, I'm assuming you've gotten feedback on this from various users? Is it kind of all over the board, or?
Yeah, it's, uh, I mean, it, like I said, PLAY have kind of given them, so they know, I mean, our main group, it's, some of the increases are going to, they'll affect like our, our Storm Swim Club and PLAY. So, um, I have talked to PLAY about it a little bit, so they know that change is coming.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
Um, and this is a kind of a big change for LABC. Will they, are they aware of it, or will they be reminded?
Yes, they've been, yes, they have actually been, already been given the heads-up on that, too.
Okay. And do you feel our prices are competitive with the area schools?
We are probably right mid, mid-range right now with our priority two. It's mid to, and then, like I said, the priority three or four, I didn't want to, uh, bust, bring, bring those up anymore, just because we're kind of right-
Okay.
-on the tier.
Okay. Any other questions? Lots of work, thanks.
We'll, we'll plan on bringing this to the April 13th, um, board session, our regular board meeting for approval, and this did go through the FLYR committee as well.
Oh, it did? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Gina.
Um, naming of an elementary. Dr. Stallow.
Excellent, thank you. Um, as you know, we do have a policy about the naming of school, uh, policy 807, and the policy really talks about, uh, the new construction of schools and what that process would be. Um, we did that recently. We followed this policy recently when we, um, named, uh, Hamilton Ridge. Um, but as we're continuing to look to open new spaces in the fall, one of the new spaces that we're going to open is, uh, change in location for La Olah Delago. Um, so, to maintain the historical importance of Grainwood in Prior Lake Savage Area schools and to provide, uh, for an identity for La Olah Delago, um, it is our recommendation as administrators that because the policy doesn't really speak to this, we would like to make a recommendation to the board that the new name, um, would be La Olah Delago at Grainwood. Um, we've, uh, had multiple conversations, um, both in ways that we can honor Grainwood and keep that as a part of our identity, and then also to ensure that we're honoring La Olah Delago as we make that move. Um, that would be our recommendation. The policy doesn't speak to something like this, of this magnitude, so we just wanted to be sure that we brought it to the board, uh, to see how you would like us to proceed with that.
Well, I appreciate your, um, continuing to keep the name Grainwood. Um, it's been Grainwood forever, and, um, I'd be sad to see that go. So, I do appreciate that part of it, and to identify, um, the school that's there, I think it's, it's a good, um, compromise, maybe, um, of, of getting both names in, so. Any other comments?
I would agree. I concur. I'm glad Grainwood's in there.
As well.
Board members, would you like us to bring that, um, on April 13th, so we have an official vote in record of that-
Yeah.
... recommendation? Okay, we'll plan on bringing that back, and it'll be, uh, very much the same explanation, um, for it. So, that sounds great. Thank you very much.
Okay. Um, next on our agenda is the standard reunification method update.
Excellent. Um, I have asked Maureen Mullen, uh, to just briefly, briefly share, um, some continued in, uh, training that we've done around our standard reunification. I have huge kudos and gratitude and thanks to give to Maureen Mullen, to Joel McCall, um, and to Joan Heisey, as well as to Jeff and Jim and Julie and Jim and our entire leadership team around this work. Um, but Maureen and Joel and Joan have really done some amazing work to lead the training that you're going to hear about. One of the reasons that I wanted Maureen to come forward tonight to share an update with y'all is that we're going to have a little bit of a change, and we normally have our community crisis response team meet and do a tabletop exercise in April. Um, we have changed that plan a little bit more. Maureen, they'll talk about that, but that was really why it was important for us to come together tonight and let you know why we're making a chan- a change with that. So, with that, I'll let Maureen take it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stallow. Chair Shimick, members of the board, thank you. Um, this is an update on the implementation of our standard reunification protocol and on the trainings of our emergency operations center and our rapid response teams. Um, you have a standard reunification method, or SRM slideshow in your board book. Um, we're developing this slide presentation to use for our annual SRM, uh, reviews for our Prior Lake Savage Area Schools staff, and as a training tool for onboarding new staff so that they are aware of our, our response protocols. Um, last week, we completed our emergency operations center team training, uh, here in the district, um, district office, um, the holding, staging, and accountability rapid response team trainings. It's scheduled for later this week, and all of these teams will be training together as part of a functional exercise at a reunification site as part of our annual community crisis response team meeting on June's 11th. Um, this will complete the reunification response, rapid response team trainings for our district, and we felt it was really important to include those, um, public partners in an actual functional exercise training, um, so that we could all make sure we're on the same page with that training. I'd like to use this slideshow, um, that you have in your board book to go through the, um, describe our process and procedures and trainings that we've done so far. So, if we can, uh, our first, we have our opening page, and second, um, is our mission statement, which is, um, our guiding document on this procedure. Uh, third, the third slide, um, in this presentation is an embedded link to the video that was developed by our communications department, um, that showed, that was shared with our staff and our public. The next slide shows, uh, a, um, community, um, public partners' safety meeting that we had with our public safety partners to make su- as we were early in this process, to make sure that we got their feedback and their input, to make sure that our methods and our, uh, procedures are in alignment with theirs. The next slide, uh, shows you the incident command organizational chart for Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. Um, this ICS, Incident Command System, is the system that our public partners use, so it was very important that we, um, integrate our structure, our command structure with theirs, and this is one of the tools that we use to do that. Uh, I'll skip through these, uh, slides very quickly. Um, we are divided into teams. We have our emergency operations team is at the top. We have logistics and we have operations. Our logistics team is the team that gets stuff done. They get the stuff. They're the, our folks on those teams are our grounds and our, our maintenance and our custodial teams. They are getting those sites set up, getting ready for reunification. Uh, there's a few slides that shows you the trainings that they did. Um, we had all of our staff, our, all of our maintenance and custodial staff trained over our Christmas break. Um, you can see, and those, uh, we, all skipping through them very quickly, you can see the things that they are setting up at each site. Um, we have broken it down very specifically, um, for our reunification sites, um, the items we need, where they're located. We have slides, um, and handouts for those folks, so that they know exactly what they need, when, where it's supposed to go when they get there. Um, our next, uh, section of training we did was for our operations. Operations are the folks that do stuff. Uh, they're the folks that are going to be interacting with the public as they come to the, the site, both our students, our public, our parents and guardians, and our staff. Um, we did those trainings. Um, we had them actually start here and go to a reunification site as though they were arriving. We had the board set up so that they could actually walk through it and get a feel of what that was going to feel like. Um, as you can see, as we're going through these slides, uh, some of the materials that we're using, they have job action sheets, they have vests, they have identifications, they have very specific procedures for logging in and accounting for staff that are working at these sites. Um, we, and then our next subgroup training was our Unified Command, which are the decision-makers, and that is Dr. Stallow, that is Jeff, that is, um, all, that is the people who will be at the operations center making the decisions that our logistics and our operations team will be carrying out. Um, and that training happened last week. Um, our next group, as I, uh, said earlier, that we have to, um, train still, is our holding, staging, and accountability teams. Um, and those are scheduled for later this week, and I hope we're able to, um, still hold those. I think we should be able to, so. Um, and again, to wrap it up, we will, on June 11th, have a, a functional exercise with our, our public safety partners and our rapid response teams, um, and actually, um, call an incident and, um, and go through it, so that we can actually have hands-on, so to speak. So, any questions about that, or, uh, where we're at so far? I was pretty quick buzzing through that, sorry. I apologize, but I just wanted to stay under my, uh, my few minutes allotted, so, thank you very much.
Maureen, the, the work that she just reviewed, I, I know, I know you understand the scope of this work and what it has taken to organize everything, to organize so many people, to get the trainings, to align all of the systems. This has been beyond crisis management that I have ever been a part of in my career, and I am so proud of our district leaders who are leading this, and the way that this would serve our community should that bad day ever come. We hope we're spending a lot of time and energy planning for something that we never need to use, but I've shared this story a lot, the first two weeks that I was in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, and I still have it. I, as I was looking at the, the places that I was identifying, what are the greatest needs that I saw two weeks into my tenure here, I have a post-it that has written Crisis Emergency Management, because I knew we had things in place, and I knew that was a place we needed to continue to pay attention. Um, the world has changed since that time drastically, and where we are today is a place that I have such a high degree of confidence, that we have the partnerships, we have the resources, we have the training, we have the planning in place, that we would serve our families very, very well should we have to move to a reunification. Um, so, I know that was brief, and Maureen, thank you for everything that you've done.
You're welcome.
So, that April planning that we normally have, that tabletop exercise, will happen June 11th with the same community crisis response team and many, many more. And board members would like to just kind of talk about as that, we get to that, what that could look like, um, for you. Lee, as the board chair, serves on the community crisis response team, but this'll be a pretty outstanding day, um, so we might want to talk about that. Um, with that, I know that in the conversations, uh, Joel McCall has talked to me and Joan and Maureen have talked to me about, do we have anything in, in procedure or policy where really outlines what are the board members' role, elected officials' role in a time of crisis? And, you know, while we didn't really have a lot that spoke to that, so Joel provided some resources, so we just took a little start on this. And I, I don't want to spend time tonight, I know we've got a lot of other work to do, but we wanted you to see this in draft form, and we'd like to come back to this. Um, we've referenced this, and I've, I wanted to be sure that we have, uh, approval at some point from you. We don't need that tonight, um, you know, but in the next couple of months, and maybe at the next study session, we can come back to this, and you can give some input on this draft and what might change and what might not change, and if it's useful at all. Uh, but it might be something, just as part of the work, that it's very clear, um, what the role of the, the board or elected officials would be during this time. We, we could take some, and again, I'm just conscientious of time as well, but if you've got some right now that can give us guidance to continue to revise, we're happy to take that.
Anyone have any comments? Michael?
I don't have guidance as much as, I just want to thank you in light of what we're going through right now. What I keep hearing is, before a crisis, it looks like you over-prepared, but after, it looks like you didn't do enough, so thank you for everything you're doing.
Oh, thank you. No, I, I mean, I, I read through it. I think, um, just, you know, I didn't like dive deep, but I mean, from, I think it's important to have this out there, not just for ourselves, but also for the public. I mean, so that when the situation does arise, that they understand our role, and, so, I appreciate having something like this, because that's not what you want to be thinking about when you're actually in the crisis. You know what I mean? You know what I mean? So.
And the only other comment I would make, similar to Stacy's, is I'd like to see something like this, that we understand what our role is, um, and I, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with some of it because the community may come to us and ask us questions that we're not aware of yet, and, um, I really don't want to go to them and say, well, go call so-and-so, you know? Um, so, for me, the bigger part will be, you know, staying up to date on what's going on. The communication will be huge. Um, a couple of questions I have on it that we can talk about at another time, but, um, as Stacy said, having the public understand what our role is, that we're not right in the middle of what's going on, um, that we are more oversight, policy, um, and that's going to be more of a challenge, because they'll reach out to us.
Well, we set it up like this so that we don't have to worry about, you know what I mean?
Right. But we just need to educate them, and that, that, that would be huge, that they understand that.
Yeah, in my comment, I did read through it quite a bit, and, um, I would agree with what Lee said about, some of it, I think we do need to discuss a little bit, uh, to make sure that, um, that it's maybe a little bit more succinct, and, um, I do appreciate the fact that it could be out there for the public so they understand the rules and responsibilities. Uh, and, you know, I've, I've, I've done a lot of incident responses in various venues, not in FEMA, but in this, and, um, you know, the most important thing that this does bring out very, very well is that people need to do their job. And when you're in a room and you're trying to get your job done, and the CEO's walking in, or a board member's walking in, every five minutes going, is it done yet? Are you ready? Do I have an answer, et cetera? It doesn't allow them to do their job. It can actually influence biased results or biased answers, so. Um, but we do, you know, there's things in here that I, that I, I think we do need to discuss, but for the most part, I think it was an excellent job.
And my only last comment, it would be that, um, kind of a visual person, so, I'm looking- And my only last comment, it would be that, kind of a visual person, so I'm looking forward to the tabletop exercise, but also, give me examples of, okay, how would I respond in this, you know, kind of things, you actually can relate more to it than just what's on paper. So, I would like to see some more of an example of what you should really do when you run through it.
We could practice that day, you know what I mean?
That's right, yeah.
We can practice the day that they're practicing.
Yeah. We can add that, Maureen, we can have some folks come up and ask you all questions.
Some random public people.
Well, what we'll do is, thank you, what I heard is that the general concept, it's a good start, there might be some things that need to continue to be flushed out, and like I said, we, we can take a look at flushing that out at an upcoming meeting. If you've got some additional input, why don't you please send me an email, and I'll work with Maureen, and, and Christie, and Joel, and the team to maybe embed some changes in this, based on what your comments were right now, and we can bring it back to the April study session. Thank you, thank you so much. Thanks, Maureen, for being here.
Okay, thanks. Now to the bulk of our work session, District Budget, Enrollment, and Long Range Planning.
Well, good evening. Julie Sink and Jeff Holmberg and I have done presentations jointly, so we're going to come in and out of this presentation in the same way. Tonight, you're going to hear some of the inputs and the feedback that we got from staff around some of the initial areas that we're exploring. I want to be very, very clear this evening, that there have been no decisions made, that we have looked at the parameters that you've directed us to look at, and we've done some initial work around that, but we, we have no decisions made at this point. We also are in a really different place than we were when we submitted this, this presentation in the board packet, and we don't know right now what the financial impact of anything that's happening in our state and in our country is going to have on our school district right now. You know, there was even a part of us that said, do we go forward with this presentation tonight, given that between now and April 13th, there could be a lot that changes? However, we wanted to honor the work that's been done, and we wanted to be sure to let you know where we are right now in the process. So, we'll go ahead, we'll share the presentation, we'll have a discussion, and then you can provide continued guidance as we continue to do our work. You've heard me say this before, you know that, just like our family budgets, we really are trying to align our budget with what it is that we value in the work of our strategic directions, which ultimately lead us to our mission, and that gets very difficult when 80% of our budget is people, and we know that it takes unbelievable people in order for that strategic direction and that work to happen. Our outcomes this evening are that we'll review the budget planning process and continue to look at that 3% or $3 million worth of reductions, adjustments, and revenue. We'll also review some of the themes and the areas identified for revenues and reductions, and provide, you'll be able to have a chance to provide some feedback to us. As a reminder, and I know that you've heard this story multiple times, it's not a story, I know you've heard this multiple times, but we believe it's important for us all to continue to let our community understand, our staff understand, and, and make sure that you all understand the key reasons behind the budget shortfall right now. We have 200 students less than originally we had projected, and that's $2 million less in revenue for 2019, '20, going into the 2020, '21 year and beyond. Our state funding has not kept pace with inflation, you've seen that data multiple times. And lastly, our projected health insurance increases are about $1 million in projected additional expenditures. We've told you before, board members, and we told all staff members, that had we gotten the 250 students that we had projected, we wouldn't be in the position that we are right now, but that didn't happen, so we are in the position that we are right now. These were some of the budget guiding principles, again, that we've shared with you, we've shared with all of our staff members through this process, and this will be and is what we continue to go back to as we're, as we're having discussions and ultimately bringing forth recommendations to you. So it's just a review once again, again, just that reminder that the budget process for us started long ago, some decisions were made last June, some decisions were made in October, as we knew more about what that enrollment would be. Board members acted on, acted on, took some action regarding the open enrollment numbers, which allowed for additional students to enter the district, because now, the short-term capacity planning that we had done, we now have more additional space for that. Also then, moving into the future, you've again seen the timeline, and we are, as you can see, on March 16th, so we'll share some additional information with you, and the information and the input that we got from our staff. So with that, some of the parameters that have been set by the board, keeping that fund balance within the 8% to 12% per our policy, and that's something that we're committed to, we want to maintain the fiscal health of our district with that. You've seen the deep, the chart that Julie showed multiple times, where we, if we do nothing right now, we have a sharp decrease very quickly in our fund balance. We want to be sure that we're making those adjustments right now, so that that doesn't happen. The other thing that we talked about is restoring the class size ratios. We've had Jim and his HR department work very closely with Julie and her team, and Jeff, and the teaching and learning team, to really take a look at. Last year, we spent a lot of time at the elementary schools, really looking at our staffing ratios at the elementary. This year, we've taken a continued deep dive into our secondary, to really get to that place of what are those staffing ratios? We know that there were some students who didn't show up, yet we added staffing for in the current year, and we also wanted to get back to a baseline, to say, over the course of the last many years, perhaps, have we, have we used that same N, have we used that same criteria for staffing? What's the baseline we're going to get back to? So, we've done a lot of work with that, and by looking at that, as we restore those class size ratios, you'll see later in the presentation, just where we are with that process right now, in terms of, in terms of some potential possibilities for us with the adjustment process. And then also, as we look at open enrollment, again, we know that kindergarten, we, the board had approved an increase from 75 students to 100 students, and then 30 students at each of the other grade levels. So, those parameters, we have not met at this point, and I don't know, Julie, later in here, are we talking about enrollment, or is there anything you'd like to add right now with enrollment?
Really hasn't been a lot of change since we had that discussion in March.
I guess it was just last week.
Last week.
It was just last week. Yeah, that's a good point.
It feels like a long time ago, I'm sorry.
And that's, that's something that we're, we're monitoring all that, that constantly, and I think the important thing, just to every chance we get, remind our community that open enrollment decisions by the board, you make those on an annual basis.
I'll talk a little bit about the revenue budget. The top part of this slide is what we presented last week to the board about what our revenue budget looks like, and the increase in the 2% in the formula, from 6438 to 6567, increasing our enrollment by 125 additional students. We anticipated an increase in special ed revenue, as well as our achievement and integration revenue, for a budget of a little over 3 point, almost $3.3 million. However, since that time, we've really looked and dug into some things, especially concerning special education. That was one of the things I had come to you and said, this is one area that we really want to look at. For special education, because of some new laws, this new, this year becomes the new base year, and we've gotten some guidance from MDE about how to better utilize, maybe a better way to say that, or recode some of our staffing, so that we can maximize our revenue for next year. And so we're working on doing that right now, as we speak, we're following through with that and getting that information up to date, so that we, and by doing that, we feel we actually can increase an additional $400,000 in special ed revenue. And one of the ways is, that we're doing that is to kind of flip-flop our tuition payments, instead of it coming out of state funding, that's now coming out of federal funding, and by doing that, that reduces, tuition is reduced from our total revenue that we get in state funding, and so, we're able to actually maximize some more revenue coming in state funding. So, and the other way that we're looking at some additional revenue is, we have quite a few more students coming from Farmington School District into our MNCAPs program, and so based on that agreement, we feel that we'll be somewhere around an additional $200,000 in revenue coming from Farmington School District for those students attending our, our program. And as we move forward into the expenditure budget, this is what we presented again last week, and as we go through that, we have some updates to this slide as well. One of the couple of things that have changed since last week is our, we really went through our insurance, we've had meetings with our insurance committee, and in April, we'll be coming to you for approval of, instead of a 12% increase, only an 8. And we're able to do that, we are, we did take a really good, hard look at what does that do to our insurance, because we're self-insured. It does dip into our fund balance a little bit, potentially dips into our fund balance a little bit in our insurance fund by doing that, but what it allows us to do is some time. It allows us some time to relook at ways that we offer our health insurance to all of our groups, and all of our employees in the district, and it gives, buys us a year of time to educate our members on what's, what is out there for insurance, and ways that we can help better utilize and be better consumers of our insurance. And so, that was the consensus of the group, is that we would only increase our health insurance by 8%, and that would, is a projected savings to the district of $300,000. There's also some savings to our employees by doing that as well. Some employees that, that we, that have like family insurance or single plus one insurance, we're going to be hit quite hard by this big increase, and so this actually helps them as well. It's still an 8% increase, but it's, it's better than a 12%, you know, for those people that are having to pay that. And then we also went out for bids on our life and long-term disability insurance, and we saw a significant savings in that as well, of about $120,000 for next year. In fact, we have a kind of a, a rate lock in there for the next three years, I believe it's three years, for that life and long-term disability insurance. So that's $120,000 savings there as well. So, both of those together is savings of about $420,000. So, we are showing some additional revenue, about $600,000, and here with these updated expenditures, that's another $420,000 as part of that savings. Sorry, back and forth.
So, as you know, we got a chance to meet with every single one of our buildings and sites and the DSC, to just ensure that staff understood where we were at and why we were where we are with our budget. And then we also had an opportunity where we asked them, you know, what are some things that, from your perspective, what are some things we for sure do not want to touch as we make this budget adjustment? What are some ideas that you have for efficiencies, and what are some ideas that you might have for additional revenue? And these are really the themes that came through, there were certainly other things, but, but the, the revenue themes were all longer-term strategies in terms of additional levies, in terms of looking at a technology levy down the road, additional operating, maximizing, you know, some of our achievement and integration, or other levy authority. And then there was also kind of a pot around increasing some fees. Are there some other ways to increase fees, whether it's athletics? We just heard Gina this evening talk about some of the facilities, you know, are there some other places that we might look at that? In terms of the reductions and the efficiencies, you know, as I said before, we are a people business, 80% of our budget is for salaries and benefits. So really, what we saw around the themes of what are those opportunities for reductions or efficiencies, was really around different areas of staff, you know? Are there, are there reductions in administration, or deans, or TOCs, or certified staff, special education, support staff, substitute staff? That was one that a lot of people had said, you know, do we have to have, do we have to have substitute teachers right now? So really, I mean, you know, a lot of people had, and that seems like a really short list, and there was a lot more under that, but that's really what it came down to. And underneath, some of those support staff, or some of those certified staff, there were other, you know, there were other specifics around that, which we've continued to look at and will continue to look at. And the other area that, that folks talked about were some of those energy efficiencies, and we'll see some work later, that Maureen and Jim and their teams have been working on as well. So as we look at, going back to some of those parameters that you had set, the study that we've done, is we looked at the restoring of the class ratios, and again, that was a collaborative effort, looking at a whole lot of numbers and a whole lot of data, having meetings with our, our principals, again, a lot of work done at the elementary level last year, a lot of that work happening at the secondary level this year. But as we look at where we are in terms of projected enrollment, where we are right now in terms of FTE, if we restored our classroom ratios to, to where they, where we want those numbers, and again, the board hasn't done, and we don't have tight, hard numbers, but we kind of have that range that we look at, at each of those levels. We'd be looking at the elementary, a potential of 3 to 5 reduction of FTE, and at the secondary, a reduction of 5 to 7 FTE. So again, we haven't done anything at this point to identify what that looks like, we just wanted to give you tonight an idea of what those numbers look like in the, the course of the study that we've done to date. We also have looked at, you know, where could we restructure? Where did things that we might have had in place several years ago, for all the right reasons? What's changed and evolved since then? Where we built some capacity, perhaps in staff, to do some things differently? So, as we look at that, we've been looking with some of the teaching and learning department potential restructure, and looking at some, some positions there to take a look at. And then we're also taking a look right now at some staff vacancies. Where, where do we know retirements? Or where are some positions that we have the potential of then, not that, that we'd have to reduce anything, but that we wouldn't fill some positions? So we wrote, we know right now that the district naturalist is retiring. We right now held back on hiring a peer coach position, and we also have another retirement, retirement with one of our, our gifted in talent synergy positions. So again, that's an opportunity that we've talked about in terms of saying, you know, those could potentially be positions that we didn't fill. And you can see there, the, the potential reduction there, we've got a range to show you, between a million and about 1.2 million. On those ideas, again, let me say, no decisions have been made, we just want you to know what we've been studying and what we've been doing to date. So some additional reduction strategies that, you know, we don't have costed out, nor do we have decisions about, is looking at, both from an administration, as well as dean of students, looking at potential reductions there. Continuing to look at some of those staff efficiencies, as we look at staff retirements, as we look at support staff, special education, is there some attrition we could take a look at there? Looking at the operational efficiency, and again, I'll be showing you some numbers in a minute, around our energy savings, there's some strategies we have around transportation that we can take a look at, and then looking at negotiation parameters as well. So some additional strategies that we have. Me or you, Julie?
This kind of just continues on what that energy efficiency is. We kind of, we estimate for the first year could be up to $75,000, but after that, we could continue to work on some of those energy efficiencies, and it could end up being in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, but we have to kind of work through that, it's going to take more than a year for us to really implement that, those strategies. And then the other opportunity is the transportation efficiencies, evalu, reevaluating, because our, we've added one, another. because our, we've added one, another elementary school. Do we relook at offering those busing services within a mile of some of our elementary schools, such as Jeffers Pond and Glendale? We added some of those in. They're not big savings, but there's something that we've been looking at as well. And then, we also have, as Dr. Stallow said earlier, maximizing our levy authority for achievement and integration, but that would be for another, in the future, additional operating or technology levies that we would have to ask our voters for and increasing those fees. If there's some interest in us looking at those options for the future as well.
Talked a little bit about some of those key messages that, again, we just want to be sure our community understands and our staff understands is that we are a growing district. We did grow this year, just not as much as what we had anticipated. That state funding's not keeping pace. The expenditures that Julie shared with us and where some of those costs were higher than we anticipated. And that, the sky's not falling and we need to make some adjustments in order to maintain the, the long-term health, this financial health of our district. So, with that, what we are interested in, and again, you know, I, I, I know that you, I'm not sure what you thought coming into this, if we would have more decisions or more recommendations. But really, we've been in a place of study. Obviously, we haven't had a lot of time in the last couple of days to do a lot more work on this. But we wanted you to know what we've done to date. We wanted you to know what some of our study and thinking has been. And wanted to hear some feedback from you.
And I just wanted, and you did mention it earlier, but I just want to say that everything that's happening right now, we have not heard any updates about the financial, what's happening financially with the district. Nothing is set in stone. We have a lot of questions out there as far as how are they going to fund districts? And the expectation that we're paying everyone, we are making some assumptions that they're going to continue to pay us as if students are attending school here for all of these days. But there's a lot of questions out there about how they're funding community education because we're required to pay that staff as well as our food service staff. So, there's a lot of questions out there where those two funds would not be part of the general education funding formula. And how are we paying for them? Does that have to come out of the general fund? How are they going to do that? We haven't received guidance on that yet. And I know it's forthcoming, but this could change our projections for the future. And it could definitely have an impact on what we're bringing to you in April. So, I just kind of want to set that stage a little bit to say that we're a little bit in the unknown at this point in time and that we need to be aware that those could have an impact on us as well.
Go ahead, Jonathan.
You know, as, as was mentioned earlier, a week ago feels like a long time ago. I have a hunch by the time we're revisiting this again in April, it's going to look significantly different again, and we will know more. It's certainly encouraging at this moment that those, the gap has narrowed. You know, both numbers have moved in the right direction. And, and so, that's, that's encouraging. I appreciate that there are options being considered and that, I, I think we're, I think we're heading in the right direction. I'm not sure that, I'm not sure it's not going to look tremendously different the next time we convene.
Stacy?
Just some clarity on that. So, you know, the numbers, so are you saying the numbers then if I'm reading this correctly? I just want to make sure. So, the total increase in expenditures for next year because of that 420,000, now we're at like 4.6 million. Okay, I just want to make sure. And then, 3.8 is estimated revenue additional? So, we're like $800,000 short?
No, we're, we received another 600,000 in revenue. So, for a total of 3.8 million instead of 3.3.
Right, I'm just saying the difference between 3.8 and 4.6. 4.6 is the increase in expenditures. And you're telling me the increase in revenues is 3.8?
You, you can't take, it's really going to be hard to explain this, but you, it's, because we're already dipping into fund balance this year, you can't just take that difference between what we're overspending just for next year. You have to consider what's happening in the current year as well.
Right.
So, that's why we're at the $3 million. And so, some of our expenditures are coming in a little bit less.
But we were at the 3 million with the other assumptions. That's, I'm just wondering if there's room.
So, we're trying to solve a problem for $3 million.
Right, but the assumptions have somewhat changed here is what you're telling me. The revenue and expenditure assumptions have changed.
Right, but it doesn't bring us to.
So, is it still 3 million?
Right, a balance, but.
Well, we've come up with some reduced expenditures worth of 2.6 plus additional $600,000 of revenue. So, it's looking more like $2 million.
Right, that's what I'm asking. Like, there, there is, like, there's been some.
The movement, yes. And I believe that's what.
Right, right. I'm trying to get more concrete numbers about it. Because I'm like, so, do we really need to look at 3 million? Or do we really need to look more like at 2 million?
If you exclude those two things, 2 million.
Well, I think.
We're trying to kind of, we, what we were trying to do in this presentation is say, here's what we told you and here's where, what we've, some of the changes that have been made. So, it does give you, we're trying to come up with a total solution of $3 million. Some of that is some new revenue, reduced expenditures.
Right.
It's been looking at both.
Right.
The, you know, the task we gave you is look for revenue sources to bump this part up and cuts to bring this part down to narrow the gap.
Yeah, but the potential reduction stra- I mean, like, what we have to look at further.
Now, the remainder is 2 million if we consider, we already know the $420,000 if the board agrees to the eight percent. And we'd, so that's 420,000 plus. We are pretty confident in the $600,000 of additional revenue. So, if those things are pretty much set and everybody agrees with that, yes, we're looking at additional $2 million of somewhere of trying to come up with either some more additional revenues by increasing fees or doing some of those types of things or some additional reductions.
So, and I know we have the calendar out here. I'm just, you know, with the way the world is right now. And you're going to have to keep track of this, how this, I know we're in three budgets at once. But, you know, so say we get somewhere and we're, we're comfortable, whatever, and we do this change on the May 4th. Say, we, say, I'm, I'm just putting out scenarios now. So, say we don't do as much as we want, because we want to be conservative, because we don't know what the changes are going to be happening with our income this year. And say we need to do more later. Is that a possibility?
It is, but I'm, I would have to relook and see where we're at with our fund balance policy. If the intent is to stay within our fund balance policy, that's one, one of the things I'll have to look at. Because where are we at?
So, the 2 million that we still have to do would just get us at eight percent?
Not necessarily.
Okay, well, because we have between eight and 12. So, I mean, that's, so there's numbers in between there. That's what I want to know, is what's the playroom? What's the, you know what I'm saying? And, and what do we have to for sure decide now?
One of the things that we looked at is what does the real, what does the future look like? So, we're just talking one year. And so, we, our thought is the $3 million is a cut or reductions or increases in revenue, whatever, that we can come up with $3 million sets the stage for a better view in, in the following years. So, let's, if for instance, if we, and this is just a, for instance, if we only cut $2 million this year, there could be additional cuts next year. And they would have to be bigger because now your fund balance went down even more. So.
But there might not be.
Right?
I'm just saying.
There might not be. And that's the chance that we took the current year.
Right.
But that's what I'm saying, to continue down that road of, well, pushing it down the road does exactly what that falling off the cliff looks like.
Right.
And when you push that down the road without making proper changes, then it is, it gets a little bit scarier looking down the road.
I ask you to clarify one thing. You said with the 2 million, and then we had to make cuts again, that that would push our fund balance even lower. So, if we only cut 2 million or we cut 3 million, is it going to lower our fund balance that much? Or not, or, I mean, I guess what happens to our fund balance depending whether we cut 2 million or 3 million?
I'll have to give you, I can go back and look and see exactly what that does to our fund balance, assuming.
It's going to affect it and lower it, though?
Oh, sure.
Yes, the 2 million.
Definitely.
Okay. But the 3 million was where? That's what I guess. Was that a 10% or?
No, we're at 11 now and I would say we're going to be right at the eight with a.
Million?
With a 3 million. I guess that's what I wanted to know. We're going to be touching the fund balance no matter what and what we're doing here? Okay, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
No, that's okay.
I mean, that's.
And I can, like I said, I can give you an exact number, making some assumptions about the current year and assuming that we're ending the year where we're at right now. And there's no change in funding for the current year or however that's going to end up. And I can make, that's why it's so difficult right now. It's probably, it's harder to answer this at this point in time right now and with an unknown what's happening for the future.
Right, and that's why I want to know, what do I have for flexibility?
It's not going to be easier. It's not like we're going to save money from here to the end of the year.
Really?
Yes, because we don't have an idea of, I can't answer that, which is really hard for me to answer that.
I know, I know. Well, I'm, that's why, I mean, I'm asking the question.
Because we are spending just what we anticipated that we would be spending because the requirement is right now that everyone continues to get paid.
Right.
So, even though we don't have income coming in for food service, even though we don't, or child nutrition services, even though we don't have income coming in from activities, we don't have income coming in from, for community education classes and, and kids company and those services that we're providing, especially for the kids company that's free at this point in time. Child nutrition services, we're still waiting on information on what that looks like. So, there's a lot of unknowns out there right now. And that's what I'm saying, like.
Well, that's why I'm asking for flexibility.
And I understand that. I don't know.
Right, and I know you don't. I mean, but I, that's why I'm saying, as far as the calendar of what we have to approve, what we don't have to approve. Is there an option for us to come back at a later time after we have, you know what I mean? And make some adjustments?
You always have that opportunity.
Okay.
You always have that opportunity. That wouldn't be my recommendation at this point.
So, I just want to, I've got a couple of things. First of all, even before the shutdown, we were still at an estimated 3 million. And I've got a series of questions. One, could you please re-explain the special education revenue and how that happened?
So, the law changed for this year. So, they used, the base year for community or special education was in 2016. And that was kind of an unprecedented because we didn't know how that would affect us. And so, a lot of school districts kind of got caught on, off-guard by how they calculated because we get the lowest, currently, we get the, there's three calculations out there for special education. Districts receive the lowest revenue of those three. And so, what they've done is they've said that this current year that we're in right now is the new base for moving forward. And so, if we make some strategic moves in how we spend our money, we can capture some more revenue in state aid. And how that happens is, and it seems very odd, but in the past, you haven't been able to, our administrators for special education, anybody who's not direct services to students, we would not get any reimbursement for them if they were coded, if there's no better word, to state special ed. But we got reimbursement under federal special education. Well, that has changed a little bit. And so, there's, if we, instead of, so we can move them to state special education and get credit for them as part of our expenses and instead move tuition billing, which for our district is about a million dollars in tuition billing when we, and what tuition billing is, is when we serve, other districts serve our students, whether it be a cooperative or another district serving our special ed students, they bill us back for that portion. Right now, that's about a million dollars. If we can code that 100% or even somewhat to federal special education, then that, we get some more state aid because we're not having to reduce our state aid by the tuition billing. Very complicated. It's the easiest way, I know how to say it.
No, it, it makes sense. I, I, and I remember being grandfathered the, the first part of that for when it was going to kick in, when they did change law, because that was explained, I think, in 20, early 2017. I'm just wondering how stable that is also going forward considering.
I've, we actually had MDE out here and we went through it all with them and sat down with them and how can we make this and maximize this? And that was their recommendation. The biggest unknown in that is how many districts will do that? And number two is what the proration will then be for all districts in the state of Minnesota.
Yeah, especially if they run out of money.
Exactly. You're exactly right. And so, my, I actually don't have, have out there the maximum amount for that exact reason. I actually think we may get a little bit more money than that, but for that reason alone, I'm being conservative with that amount of money that's out there for special education right now.
But talking long-term on that, that's not exactly a dependable number a year or two out.
I think it would be.
Really?
I do. I think it's a dependable number a couple of years out. It just really depends on what the state will do with continuing to provide those, that.
That's why I'm not sure it's dependable right now.
But right now, I think that's a pretty good number. And, but I think if we look to the future, it may be that we would get that amount of money, but how much more would we get on top of that? That will be the question.
Then, a couple of other questions that I had. You, there's a couple of other things in here just highlighted. You talk about energy efficiencies. How was that estimated?
So, we have, I've worked with Jim DeWol and Maureen Mullin a little bit with this. We, because our updated facilities that we have right now, and we actually have a lot of, we have updated a lot of our HVAC systems. Okay, that would be great. I'll have Jim actually talk about this. There's ways to do that. He's probably a little bit, will be able to explain it a little easier than I would. I didn't realize you were right behind me.
Good evening, can you hear me? So, Mary, one, one thing that we, we're updating our automation systems or part of them. And a feature of that is to help track how, how the systems are performing. And it actually logs deficiencies that then we can track and repair. And it also calculates off our real-time energy use, the cost of the repair. So, it's, it's a pretty sophisticated system. And along with that would be some low-hanging fruit of just the way people use energy. We have a lot of capacity to squeeze some more money out of our energy.
Okay. Does the reduction in oil prices right now and natural gas and stuff like that help? Did you include that in there or is that just a short-term estimation?
We have no way of forecasting that, so our budget, our utility tracking that normalizes all of that.
Okay.
So, the one thing we can control is consumption.
Okay. Well, I will give you guys credit because I remember last year, there's, there was a fairly hefty percentage increase that you had estimated that I was hoping was going to be slush. And then, with the additional automation and improvements, hopefully that will all come to fruition and then some. So, thank you very much for that proactive work on the energy, on the energy side. Another question that I have, though, has to do with the general themes and the, and the reduction strategies, you know, and I've been harping on this the whole time. When we look at elementary and secondary classroom FTEs, I'm assuming that, on the slide where you're projecting 500 and 750,000 on here, is that existing full-time? Or is that going to be by natural attrition? Because those two are kind of conflated in the, in the discussion.
Well, it really depends upon where we end up, right? We do have some retirements and some resignations and that would take up some of those. Unfortunately, you always have to look at where the reduction happens and what the licensure of the person who's leaving the position. So, that it, you may have five or six or seven resignations and retirements. It doesn't always line up with where the reduction would need to take place, right? So, that's one of the things we look at. And some of those things are still ongoing right now as we look at that to see how many actual FTEs. Two things, you look at the number of FTEs that. Two things, you look at the number of FTEs, that gives you a dollar amount, and then you look at people and licensure and where they fit within there, right? That's kind of two separate things that are related.
Okay.
Okay. One thing, Stacy, you talked about timing and timeline, I just want to make sure I put this plug in here on the staff side. When Dr. Stallow talked about 80% of our budget is people, and you look at reductions, there is some statutory requirements related to when you may let folks go, right? And especially for teachers, I think we need to make sure that, we're really cognizant of that because depending upon probationary or continuing contract, there's a July 1st deadline, but when you back that up with all the pieces of being able to ask for the reason in writing, hearings, that sort of thing, that's why we always look at April as that time. So just to be cognizant of that, as you talk about that, related to that, because, you know, if this does, if it has to happen and we let someone go, we also want them the opportunity to look for another job, too, so.
I appreciate that. One of my questions with, so thank you very much for that clarification because that did help me understand it. When we're talking about teacher reduction and as well as staff reduction, you know, we've got, you know, I've been through the elementary schools and middle school and the high school and stuff like that, there's, there's, there's a lot of need particularly for certain levels of teachers. And let's say if we start at the elementary school, and I asked about this last time on the, on the board meeting about putting a red line, like, are we going to get rid of, let's say, or is any, is this all, you know, clear on the chopping block that we could actually not have, let's say, reading interventionists and things like that? Or is there, are there things that are not, again, touchable here because we know it's going to directly impact education? Not that any reduction isn't going to, but certain things are definitely, you know, a little bit more sensitive on meeting our goals and our objectives when we're educating children. So is there anything here that, that, that is not touchable from this perspective, or anything here that we need to be incredibly concerned about as far as not meeting our objective to be able to educate every kid to the fullest potential?
Well, talking specifically to those cuts that we have on there, that was about restoring, looking at class sizes, right? So when we, when we want to write size or get back to those class sizes, that's the FTEs that we're talking about as far as numbers to do that. It doesn't mean we wouldn't look at other things, but with that edict from the board, that's what we were looking at related to that. And I think we've had conversations around all of those things, but these are a list of some possibilities. So I don't, I don't think we wrote anything down as off the table.
And I will say, and this is going to sound very odd, but I don't think there's enough money to do really, I mean, we could always use more money at all times to help our students reach their full potential. And unfortunately, we just don't get enough money that, and this is my opinion, and I'm speaking for my opinion, but this is a tough thing for all of us to do. Because no matter what we do, we're impacting kids, and we're impacting staff, we're impacting what we do every day, and we're changing how we do things. And we're trying to be more efficient how we do them, but I would say there's always a way for us to have, if there was a way for us to have more money and to help us reach our, every kid reach a full potential, I'm sure that there, we would, more than, we would need it and use it wisely any way that we could. It's not like we have an abundance of money, as you've seen in the past. We are one of the lowest revenue-receiving districts around our, in this area, and we spend the lowest. So it isn't like we have a lot of extra fluff in our district currently.
I really appreciate the question. And it's one of the reasons that we start all of our meetings and especially these presentations with that strategic plan. I mean, we've looked deeply at, at what, you know, because that's been our improvement theory. We added that notion around social emotional learning. We've been working really hard on our MTSS systems, which speaks directly to what you were just talking about, Mary, with the reading interventionists and some of those supports for students. So that's been our struggle as well, as we look at this to say, and Julie just said it, everything impacts those student outcomes and that mission. So how do we continue to take a look at, and I can't even say that, that which has the least benefit, because it all matters, everybody matters. The work everyone's doing matters. But some of those systems that we've been working on will work hard to maintain.
Are we doing anything on the, I know that you have numbers here, but I don't see any number next to administration or dean of students. Is that something that's also under consideration?
That's why they're out there. We don't want people to think we're not looking at that. We're just looking at what's the best, how can we continue to do what we're doing? What does that look like? What does that number look like? And so we had some time to delve into these, and we've had, we need more time to look into, what does that look like? How is it consistent across the district? What are those areas that we can still continue to do some of the things that we're doing? So that's kind of what that looks like right now.
Stacy, or Michael, did you, something first?
Okay. So the restore classroom ratios, can you tell me again what the ratios are? 23, you know, like, so we could sustain, well, you said, you know, the ratio. So the ratios that we're going off of for elementary, secondary, I mean, so we can sustain.
So elementary, it'd be an average class size of 23.
Okay.
Middle school, 30, high school, 32.
Elementary is 23 and a half.
Okay. So we would still be able to maintain that with these reductions?
Does that 23 and a half also include all class types?
That's K5.
But I mean, aren't certain classes, particularly for maybe learning disadvantaged and things like that, does that average in there, or is that not included in that?
So those are, those would be special programs, those ratios would be different.
Okay, thank you.
And I know you all know that to get to that 23.5, you know, we, we want at our primary schools, our primary grades to have lower class sizes, and then we know that they get larger as we get into fourth and fifth grade.
And it's hard to understand this, and I think this is what's difficult, is that we anticipated 250 students this year. We're budgeting for 50. We're budgeting next year for 125. We're not even anywhere close budget-wise to what we've started this year with budgeting. So between the 50 and the 125, we're still only 175, where we budgeted last year for 250. So that's kind of why we're sitting here behind the eight ball a little bit.
Just, you budgeted for 250, you said with attrition by the end of the year, it would be 50. Are we on track to make it there with that attrition?
We're there.
Okay. All right. And then, next year, we're budgeting for more, but we also approve the open enrollment.
And I reported to you, if you remember last Monday, we're just slightly short of what our 120, of the 125 students, including the open enrollment. But if you recall, we have this trend of losing those 75 students throughout the year. And so we need to start the year at that 200 number. And so we're looking at, we need about another 75 students. We have some good news out there. I mean, our elementary kindergarten next year is higher than we anticipated at this time previous, last year, so it's a little bit higher. We also know that there are students out there at the kindergarten level that haven't registered for school yet. So we're still, and, you know, in our, in our neighborhoods, they're not registered for school. So we have, we are giving lists to our building secretaries and staff to help call and make sure that they're registering for school. So we're doing those types of things for the kindergarten level. And we're seeing higher-than-normal increases in sixth grade for next year. So some of those things are happening right now, but it's kind of, this kind of stalled right now in this last week. I mean, it's just a hard thing to, where are we going, what's happening? So, again, I, it's hard for me to see that at this point in time, where we're going to end up.
Where are we with our open enrollment numbers?
We're at 93 at kindergarten. All the other grade levels, we're not, haven't reached our numbers at all. I mean, we're, we've seen, I think, I think at the elementary total that have applied is 148, including the kindergarten students. So if that, and that means they've just applied. It doesn't mean that they've.
They're coming.
They're coming here.
Won't know until probably October 1st when the final number comes in. Any other comments or questions? Jonathan?
I greatly, the back and forth a little bit about the flexibility, I think the flexibility will be helpful for us, and I look at it almost from a little bit of a, of a, I'd say, just wanting to be ultra-conservative at this time. Uncertainty equals risk. And I, there's, there are just, there are more uncertainties at this moment than there have been in a long time. What's going to, what is the state going to have for revenues a year from now? You know, that, that's going to impact what schools get. I mean, granted, we're locked in for two years, but other stuff, I mean, you know, so, yeah, we're talking about second year, that's right. Are we going to continue to see construction in, and new students coming and new construction? Our home value is going to be the same, and are we going to have the same money coming from our levy? I mean, it's just, there's, there are, there are a lot of uncertainties that make me tremendously nervous. I'm sure they're keeping you up at night. And so I appreciate the fact that we're trying to look at this from as conservative a lens as we can at this point. And I really, really appreciated your comment earlier to the effect that you would rather see us cut, you'd rather see us manage the shortfall this year without touching a fund balance and keep that in place because in the years ahead, we may need it more than we need it now. At least, that's my perspective.
Unfortunately, that is exactly the concern that I have, is, you know, with an 8% fund balance, our expenditures every month are almost $9 million. A 10% fund balance is $10 million for our district. We go down to eight. We don't have a month's reserve. So that's a struggle for districts because if we need to borrow money, we're not getting enough, we need to borrow money, that's a cost to the district as well. And that's usually 85 to $100,000 a year. And that's an expensive, that's expensive as well. And, you know, it's that balancing act that we try to do every year to ensure, that's why the eight to 12, and I understand the eight, I think we all do, and I think that's, but with the trying times that we're in right now, that 10% is, it's a little more comfortable for me. It doesn't make that right, and maybe that's a selfish way for me to look at it because I get that we're looking at, and it's the same way with, we looked at, the exact same thing we looked at with our health insurance fund balance. And that's why we made that decision, the same decision that you're coming to right now. We're looking at all of those things to say, what, what can we do? And where will we end this year? And hopefully, we'll, as the time goes on, we'll have better vision of what that looks like and better information coming from the state. Right now, it's just a lot of uncertainty.
Could you talk a little bit about what would be the process to do an additional operating levy or a tech levy?
An operating referendum would be going to our voters, and it has to be done in November. And that would be so much dollars, so much money per student attending our district. A technology levy, you could actually do that anytime outside of November, or I shouldn't say anytime, I think there's some specific dates now. It's been a while since I've talked, I haven't looked at that legislation, but there are some specific dates for that. That's a, that's amount per year. It's not per student necessarily. So that's amount per year. And so if you went out for $2 million or $2.5 million, something like that, that's what we talked about in the past when we were looking at it back in 2016 and 17. That's the number we were looking at.
So for the operating levy, if we needed to do something, we would, what would be the process? We would have to get that now for November? How does, what is the timeline for that?
I'd have to look at that again, Mary, that's, I think there's, there's a certain amount of days that you have to have, and I think it's by August that you have to do that, make that decision. And that would be for a November vote, and that money wouldn't come until the following year. So would not be for next year, would be for the following year.
People would start getting taxed in January as our first payment, then July 1st, is that it?
Our payment is in May, but it's recognized in the next fiscal year.
Right, okay.
Well, I for one, don't want to touch the fund balance any more than we have to. I took a long time to get to where we're at. I, I'd like the idea of talking about the efficiencies, and I'm glad you put all of the different groups on here to look at efficiencies. I really don't like the idea of reductions, but that's our reality, so I do support that. But looking at how we can be more efficient feels better to me. Right now, I lost my train of thought. Yeah, I'll think of it. Anyone else have any other comments?
I do. I'm a little worried about morale in general. I mean, obviously, we're dealing with a crisis time throughout the whole United States right now, but we would have been in this situation, we were already talking about this again before the, before the shutdown. And I am concerned about that, and I'd like to know what we're doing to address that because we've already been through some tumultuous times, and now we're heading into some more, probably for a longer period than we'd like to recognize. So how are we, as, as a group, as administration, as a board or whatever, helping with the morale of the, of the staff, teachers, administration, et cetera? What can we do to do what we can?
I think one of the things, and I think this is, I mean, I, I, I think that the last couple of days are a really, a really interesting test of who we are as human beings and who we are as educators and who we are as a school district. And I started the meeting saying the absolute amazing comments I heard from, from our leaders about the work that the staff did today. And I think that obviously speaks to their commitment, and I think it's, it's on us to continue to ensure that we're showing gratitude, you know? I think even the fact we, we wanted to be sure that we were with staff to help them understand what the budget, where we were. Answer questions, show up, be present. The communication that the staff will see tonight from me, I mean, as I was crafting it, especially the end of it, it's about that continued reminder of gratitude about, about what we do. And, you know, I think, I think for me, that's the most important thing of morale, is what's the culture we're building? How are we supporting each other? How are we trying to be as responsive as possible? And at the end of the day, we have to make some really hard decisions. So if we've built deep relationships based on trust, it's easier to have some of those hard conversations. And I know with our administrative staff, those are things we talk about all the time, is how are we, how are we supporting our staff? How are we building them up? And I think, I think culture is all of us, you know? I think that's the other really important reminder, and I think trying times, whether it's budget reductions or adjustments, or whether it's the coronavirus, I think, I think in tough times, we, we, you know, have to continue to come together and support each other and, and make hard decisions, show gratitude with each other. But it's all of us. It's not me that sets a culture, it's not a principle that sets a culture. It's not, it's every single one of us, and it's every single. And it's every single one of us every day saying we are professionals who are committed to this profession. Julie said it, we all know we don't have enough funding. We all know that there we could do better and more with our students with more dollars. We educate students in Prior Lake Savage area schools for twenty-one hundred dollars less per student than the average seven county metro. Our staff are doing incredible things every single day. And so Mary, it's really a complex question. And I know that I'm I'm rambling a little bit here with that, but I think it's the everyday stuff. I think it's every day, how are we communicating? How are we supporting our staff? How are we showing gratitude?
Well, I'm I'm chiming in a little bit. I think it's walking hand in hand down to the legislator and telling them. I mean, I think if anything, we've seen how schools are, I mean, we know they're all integral part of our society. But especially this week with everything going on and the fact that the majority of metro districts are cutting and we're growing. Well, you saw the list, they published the list and the last, the majority of districts are cutting. And so you know, it's you've seen the chart where, you know, keeping up with the rate of inflation. I mean, it's just they continue to be asked to do more each and each and every year with less and less. And I think, you know, standing with our teachers and standing with our administrators and talking to our legislators and doing more than just having a dinner. I mean, it's going down there. And
Right now, they they're they're in a situation where the surplus is probably gone.
Right, I get it. I mean, we're in different times, but a week ago, it was a different story. I mean, but we were still facing this. So, I mean, we get strapped pretty tight on of the flexibility that we have at this level. I mean, so other than going out to our community, asking for more money from our tax, our actual taxpayers here, there's there's not a ton we can do, in my opinion, but.
I would agree, but I have to say after observing the last day and a half, there was no feeling of gloom and doom from anybody. It was, okay, this is the way it is and darn it, we're going to figure this out and we're going to move forward. It was almost refreshing because I really wasn't sure what I was going to be walking into. So I I I can understand why morale might be down a little bit, but I really don't didn't get that feeling at all. It was more like, you know what, this is just one more roadblock and we'll figure out how to get through it. I couldn't have been more proud. It was great. So I I will get through this too. I mean, it'll happen.
And I think I think morale is also, you know, who are we talking to on what day? You know, because I know that when people aren't feeling good, that's when I get a lot of emails. You know, and I know that on days that people are feeling good, we don't hear it. I appreciate the fact that board members and administrators, more this year than any year that I've been here, have been in schools. So we can see our staff and we can see the great things that they're doing and we can thank them. And we can have conversations that sometimes are hard with them. And we can have unbelievable celebratory conversations with them as well. Staff are being asked to do a lot and they always have been. It is hard to be a teacher, it is hard to be a custodian and a child nutritious service worker and a paraprofessional in schools. And and the work isn't going to get any easier. And I think that I think that it is something we have to marry. I don't, I I agree, we have to constantly monitor that. And I know that our leaders monitor that in their buildings as well.
It's a, I'm for me, that's a question that on a broad scale, I don't know that it has a short and easy answer. And on a small scale, I think each day we can each say, what can I do to make everybody feel appreciated today? So, you know, really morale morale starts with morale starts with me. Morale starts with you, morale starts with how we greet the folks that we encounter throughout the day.
What do we need for feedback from us?
What direction do you need from us?
Focus here.
Is there anything that we're missing? Do you want us to continue on this path that we're on right now? Is there something else that we need to do that we're not, haven't brought to you yet? I think by the time we meet again, that we will have more information about exactly what what the intentions are from the state of Minnesota, from the federal government, all of those areas. We should have some guidance, we should be able to bring you back some more information. I can bring you back some more specifics about where we'll end if everything continues after I know that, what percentage will be. We can look at all of those things. And we can continue to, we'll continue to look at these areas and bring back some additional recommendations. And unless there's something else that we haven't brought yet or haven't thought of.
I'm not feeling like you're necessarily missing anything as much as getting more detail as to what direction we need to go in, which is a difficult thing to ask for right now.
And we know that it, we we've had discussions about this and we know we need more detail. We have some thoughts. We just need some more time.
I guess I have one question just about the staff vacancies. These three, well, the peer coach, I know because we have a normal rotation. And the you said the synergy and the naturalists are due to retirements, is that correct? I guess just because someone's retiring in an area does, I don't, you know what I mean? I I mean, and I guess I is any worse than the other? I mean, I I'm going to show my bias a little bit. And honestly, synergy is very important too, I would. But the naturalist position has always kind of been something kind of unique for our district. And I know that's something, you know, with being East M that we identify. So I guess that one hurts me a little. I mean, they both do, don't get me wrong. I mean, they really do. But that one, I know how hard it was to get, you know, in the beginning, years and years ago.
It started with the part-time position and it moved up, yep, I get it.
And then it went away. And it went away for a while. And I know how much, you know, staff enjoys that, you know, piece. So that one kind of bothers me.
Well, I think what would be important is if we don't have that position, how do we
Those things continue.
How do we continue doing the things that we want to do? And that might come back to the efficiencies. You know, can we be more efficient in a different way with
And the simple, and one of the simple answers of that, and it's not a satisfying answer, right? But but especially a position like like Susan, what she's done working hand in hand, our naturalist with staff is, you know, part of the goal is always to build the capacity in our staff. But then it's also another support that we're taking away.
Right.
For the work that we want them to do.
Yeah, my point was just because the person's retiring doesn't necessarily mean it's the area that should be identified, I guess. And if there's other areas.
We've looked at some of those, same with the the synergy position.
Yeah, I would say that falls the same line with the synergy.
The difference with the synergy is, you know, we get thirteen dollars per student and we probably spend a hundred and thirty thousand dollars more than we get in revenue for gifted and talented currently. And that's not including sage. And so that was one of the areas we looked at to try and say, well, maybe we need to balance that. What we receive in revenue is what we spend because we do utilize more out of the general fund than what than what we receive in revenue for gifted and talented currently. It doesn't necessarily make it right. I'm not saying that, but that was one of the reasons we looked at that.
And Julie, when I, there's a lot of criteria where money is granted in the different sectors that our name never shows up into as far as receiving some of that grant money. Is there other areas that we could actually apply for?
Well, gifted and talented is a is a categorical funding, what we call categorical. So it's part of just our regular, it's additional funding that we receive that's specific to a certain area is why I mean categorical. There are grants out there, but many, many times we do not qualify because of our free reduced lunch status. We just are exempt.
Okay. But I would like to echo Lee's statement of when we're going through this and as we're determining where changes are going to be made pro or con, that we understand the the impact. And we get as much detail as we can, knowing that that's probably going to be an evolving process. It's not something that's going to happen next time or whatever. We're going to slowly but surely add more detail to this. And I would also like to add to the assumptions. I mean, we've always assumed we weren't going to get more than two percent. That was never good enough, but we've we've made that base assumption every year that I can remember. Obviously, keeping with that base assumption, but I think to be on the conservative side, to quote, you know, Jonathan here, that we also need to assume that we're not going to grow in enrollment as much as we need to make sure that we actually have some sort of additional cushion in there and that we assume the worst and and hope for the best, that sort of thing going forward. So we don't end up in in each year, you know, having to have this discussion, at least as much as we think we're going to have to have it. I'd like to be able to estimate out as conservatively as possible. Again, I'd rather be pleasantly surprised than the other way.
You're talking about future years, not next year. You're talking about ongoing years. And I think those are assumptions that we can discuss as we go, as we move forward. So if we want to say is two percent too much, but then what we typically do, and we haven't done this for a while because it's been two percent. But if it's not two percent in revenue, then we're also looking at what are those increases in wages and benefits? And we don't look at two percent there either. We reduce those down. So we're looking at something different. And so we try to marry those a little bit to say, what do they look like? I don't know, and we can bring that back and we can, we want to look out five years and and redo those assumptions and and relook at that. Unfortunately, I think that just makes that future look worse.
Well, I'm kind of playing on the fact that when you said, you know, if we if we look at two million, then next year or, you know, then the following year, et cetera. I just like to plan for that. And again, I'd rather, personally, for me, I can only speak for me, but I'd rather be pleasantly surprised than than the other way. So just just to, as we're as we're planning this out and thinking about the net impact that we think about some of the changes that we're making as being more permanent than not and in continuing on that path, instead of hoping that, you know, next year's enrollment or this year's enrollment was a blip, I'd like to consider that going forward, just so we can be safe.
And I think for the ten years leading up to this, and we've said this, we haven't made cuts in ten years. And average, in each of those years, our revenue was better than we anticipated and our expenses were less than we anticipated. So we always try to be conservative in our revenue and we always try to be maximize our expenditures or anticipate the maximum expenditures and we try to come in a little bit better than we have. And that's how we've built our fund balance over these last ten years. And unfortunately, it takes one year of unexpected, you know, fewer students. That just kind of puts us in this position that we're in right now. But, you know, going forward, I think that's the intent, again, is to make sure that we're being as conservative as we can, watching that enrollment, maybe looking at another demographic study, especially in light of what's happening now. It may be really important for our district to look at what does that really look like? And how is this going to impact the future of people moving or developments? Or I I just don't know what that future impact is looking at. And we know there's some other things that have impact on those. We definitely are keeping all of those things in mind as we're looking at the future and how does that impact our district? And what does that look like? Is it going out for additional operating? Is it, no, we need to live within our means and we, you know, that's really limiting, maybe increases in the future or other areas? Or is there other ways that we can be more efficient in our energy consumption? We are def, those are things that we constantly are looking at from year to year. That is why we are able to be as efficient as we've been over the last ten years. This is something that we've has been a trend in our district.
Anybody have anything else to give for direction to the administrators?
So the next time we're back together, it's a it's a regular board meeting. So I don't know, I I don't know how much additional update, new information we would be presenting at that. I think we'd want it to be more of those details at the study session. And we'll we'll see if by, you know, the updates that we will give will certainly be if we know more about revenue, you know, and whatever else we know in terms of where we are by April thirteenth. But I think the next time that we would really have some more of those details is going to be that study session, which is just more of the avenue to do that. Is that, is that okay?
I asked this last time, but given the volatility of the situation they're in right now, I mean, I'll leave this up to, you know, the guidance of of everyone else. But do we need or, you know, what is the lead time we need to say, maybe we need to meet for a study session to do a little bit more granular update before the board meeting?
Well, when when do you need decisions? I I know you mentioned April for teachers, but that's not, we're not going to know that just based on the way this is going right now.
To have a work study before the thirteenth?
If we need it, what is the lead time to know that and to plan it?
I would think, well, posting it would be the normal posting procedure.
Well, I, but I think my question is, well, Mary has her question, but I think what you're also saying is, are we going to have, if we need to have more meetings? And I'm wondering at what point, like, can we just keep adding on to the existing meetings? Or do we, is there like a date that needs that we need to be done by?
The board needs to have a decision on the next year's budget by June thirtieth. But there are other decisions to be made on making budget reductions based on staffing, those kinds of things that have a different date, such as
So that's what I'm leading to, whether we need an extra meeting or we just continue discussing.
Yeah, in a typical year, you're looking at the April board meeting if you're going to take action on personnel, usually. This is not a typical year. And I think in my circles, there's a lot of discussion about what does that look like in April based upon where we're at right now with the state of things and the governor closing schools and what that looks like going forward. So in a typical year, you'd look at the April board meeting to take action on personnel.
That's practice, not necessarily law. Is that what we're doing?
Right, yep.
But I do think we need, I mean, I don't know about your kid in college, but my kid is out until April sixth minimum right now. So, I mean, if that's what they're doing with that, we may, we may need some additional decision making and stuff like that because we were not going to have some of the answers or at least get a update.
Yeah, St. Thomas and the University of Minnesota are closed for the rest of the semester. That came out today, so.
Can I, I I just want to clarify the fund balance piece, that why we're looking at eight percent fund balance. As you recall, we're we're spending down our fund balance by four million dollars this year. Next year, we're spending it down another four million. We're cutting and plus, we're overspending another two million or whatever that difference is between our revenue and expenditures, which is why we're cutting the three, which gets us to the eight percent. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
We would have needed to cut the four million that we're cut, that we overspent this year in order to be
Product, yeah.
And also not overspend next year.
Right.
Okay. I'm not seeing a good reason to have a schedule another meeting before we meet in April just because we don't know what's going on right now and we don't know what our impact is going to be. I don't know when we will, but I don't think we're going to see any differences until maybe the first week in April, maybe the second week, I'm not sure. I understand that we may need to meet again and maybe we need to double up some meetings and work sessions. For now, I guess I I I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest that, my personal opinion, I wouldn't suggest that we schedule any meetings before April thirteenth unless we find out something specific that we can work with.
Yeah. And I think to your point, if as we learn things, as we continue to work.
And I think to your point, if, as we learn things, as we continue to work, the board has always been incredibly flexible. If we requested to do an hour study session before the regular board meeting or something like that, you've always been very flexible. But maybe at this point to maintain that date and then see where we're at and in our planning and if that would make sense to have a discussion, you know, prior to then a board presentation, that could potentially be an option for us.
Yeah. If everybody could keep that in mind in their calendar, that we may have a work session before the meeting on April 13th.
And I think that's a, a smart compromise initially, just because I do think it's a, it would be a questionable choice for us to have another meeting between now and then, given guidance on.
Right.
Bodies and everything else and meetings.
I'd rather stay longer at a meeting than come more frequently.
Yep.
Right. Well, and we don't know, there's a lot we don't know. I expected to hear something tonight and we really didn't, about education anyway. With that said, are we moving on? Ready to do that?
Please do.
Okay. And we are moving on to policy. We follow the policies that we're looking at adapting. This would be the third time it's come forward. It's the policy on develop, development, adoption and implementation of policies. It was first read on March 9th. Is that true? March 9th?
Yeah.
And then this is.
This is the third time we've seen it.
This is the third time.
We've seen it.
It's been presented with the potential for action on the 13th. The only real change was making that.
Process.
Process work.
Policy.
Yeah. So a policy on policies. Does anybody have any comments or has anything changed for you? Everyone okay with it?
It's gonna be good practice once we get going on it. So I'd.
Okay.
I'll support when it's time.
Get it going on the next one for approval, right?
Okay.
And Martha will do a fantastic job of figuring out which ones in the first second.
I'm counting on Martha to keep track. And I would like to suggest that we skip the rest of the policies of this evening, if everyone's okay with that.
You, okay. I was gonna say.
We don't have time anyways.
I was gonna say 2.1, really? Couldn't we do 1? I'm trying, I mean, they just been back so many times. I'm just, like 2 of 1.1, there's nothing to it. It's state statute. There's not one change on it.
Actually, there, there actually is. They've, they put on the legislative meeting to change it, so.
Let's not talk about that.
Okay. Dr. Stowe, did you have anything else to add with superintendent relations?
I, I don't. As I said at the beginning of the, at the beginning of the meeting, I appreciate the, the continued support and confidence of board members and we stand ready to meet on an individual basis, to do a phone call at any time. As, as we continue to move through this unknown, just please know, we want you to feel confident, we want you to feel in the know and let us know what you need in order for that to happen.
I would just like to add, I appreciate everyone that could come this evening. There is some confusion as to how we could host this meeting, so I appreciate that you actually were able to come. That's not to say there may be some changes coming forward as to how we continue to, to meet or do our business. I don't, I'm not aware of anyone that wanted to address the board tonight, but I know there's two people in the audience. Is there anybody that would like to speak? Is that mic on? Or do you have the portable on or? Okay, you can go here, I guess.
My name is Justin Hickcraft. For long-term, I've been living in Prior Lake for, since I was born. And I am also a current resident and a, I've been coaching since 2000 and a teacher for 16 years now as well. I just have questions and concerns about restoring the ratios of class sizes and I'm looking for data more than anything else. And I'm hoping that you will look at this data as well. When you say average class sizes of 30 at the middle school and 32 at the high school, when you look at those two levels, you also have lots of specialty classes in there as well. And those specialty classes, like, I'll just give an example, French 5 or multivariable calculus, don't necessarily have those high levels of students in those, those classes. They end up with smaller class sizes. And I don't wanna step on the toes of the principals and that's not why I'm, I'm saying this. I just would like you to look at average class sizes of your core classes as well as your average class sizes overall. I think that those are, it gets rid of some of the outliers as well and would give you a better picture of what your students that are in core classes are looking at every, every year. So that we're not getting like a collegiate level lecture situation, I guess, for core classes. And then the other thing that I, I just wanna note data about, I guess, more than anything else, is when I first started coaching, I know that I was looking at the numbers of our students at 10th through 12th grade because I was worried about moving from one class to another with athletics. And at that point, we had about 1,100 students, maybe more than that, from 10th through 12th grade. And probably around now, we're pretty close to 2,000, which means that we haven't quite doubled that size of that group of kids. But I, I'm curious about how fast our student population has grown over this time, last 20 years, or even if you wanna look back 10 years. I'd be curious about how quickly our teaching staff and support staff has grown over that time. And I'd be curious about how quickly our administrative staff at the district office has grown over that time. When I was hired as a coach, there were two administrators and a bunch of support staff at the district office, only two, superintendent and director of operations, who covered three other categories, I guess. And since then, it has blossomed. So I'm just curious about that as well. Thank you again for all your work. I know it's a lot of work, so a lot of time and effort. That's it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That's it. So we will adjourn our study session and go into a closed meeting. Yep.